Thank you very much. Welcome, everyone, to the Tuesday, July 23rd, 2024 meeting at the Morro Bay Veterans Memorial Hall. I'm going to ask the city clerk to establish a quorum and we'll call the meeting to order.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to give Councilmember Barton a moment to get settled into her mic. Councilmember Barton?
Here.
Councilmember Edwards?
Here.
Councilmember Ford?
Here.
And Mayor Protem Landrum is joining us remotely.
Can you hear Sarah?
You might need to unmute yourself. We do have a quorum.
Thank you. With that, we will take a moment of silence, please. And if I can ask, let's see, where's James? I just saw him somewhere out there. There he are. Can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Mr. Newmeyer, closed session report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. The city council met today in closed session and no items to report. The city council met in closed session on July 10th to consider two matters. There was no legally reportable action that was taken. However, in the interests of transparency, the council has asked that I report out on otherwise confidential information for item number two. What I was asked to report out, and this isn't legally required, but in the interests of transparency and disclosure to the public, the council asked me to state that item number two concerned council review under Government Code 54956.8 with staff of a potential community of benefits agreement with Vistra Energy after they sent a proposal to the city. A potential community benefits agreement includes potential real estate transactions, such as the deeding of Lila Kaiser Park to the city, which right now the city leases, and also joint real estate ventures to generate city income, as well as other related potential benefits. No commitments were made, no final action was taken on any agreement or contract with Vistra. Rather, the council conferred with city staff on a non-binding tentative response to Vistra Energy's proposed community benefits agreement to continue the conversation. Vistra Energy was informed that the city may amend this non-binding tentative response subject to further city staff review and public input. The council will be seeking community feedback and input on the proposed community benefits agreement subsequent to the initial rounds of non-binding and tentative discussions. And furthermore, no community benefits agreement will be approved, if at all, without being agendized at a public council meeting for review and discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Newmeyer. With that, we will move on to mayor and council member reports, announcements, and presentations. If you don't mind, I'll kick off since I have my notes in front of me this time. Had the opportunity to attend the Historical Society meeting the other night where they did a reading on Gladys Walton, former Mayor Janice Peters, played that role. It was so much fun. It was really great to find out some history about our community in a really fun manner. And I hear that they're talking about maybe featuring some other local families and members of the community that have long legacies here in the community. We had a subcommittee meeting for our water reclamation facility with the Cayucus. I attended a dinner with the city manager and councilmember Edwards for the League of Cities over in Atascadero, and we got to talk to them about what their plans are for the renovation of the zoo. The city held an employee barbecue that was down at Lila Kaiser, so we got an opportunity to go down and visit with everyone and all the departments and see how everyone's doing, what's going on in the city, which was great. I was invited to Kids Club. It was a very tough crowd, I will share. They had a lot of questions. I took notes and put them away because they had a lot of questions. It was a lot of fun, really great. We have a great group of kids down there and a great program that's run through the rec department. I attended Cattlemen's, stay up at the Midstate Fair, and I think that anybody who's paying attention around town knows that their 106-degree weather is certainly keeping Morro Bay busy at 66 degrees. The recreation manager gave me some updates that he shared. Fourth of July, this was from Kirk Carmichael, there was approximately 200 bikes in the red, white, and blue parade, approximately 1,500 attendees at the Family Fun Day. They had bounce houses, carnival games. The United States Coast Guard did a flag ceremony. The Bay Osos Kiwanis provided food. Morro Bay PD, Harbor Department, Fire Department, Public Works assisted in various capacities. There was lots of games and fun. Riff Tide was the band that played, and the services were staffed by the Recreation Division event with youth services, sports, and aquatics personnel. So that was a lot of fun. So last weekend was the Brian Waterberry 54th Annual Rock to Pier Run. 860 participants for 10K and 240 for the half marathon, 1,100 participants. There was a lot of people down at the beach. And then last, Morro Bay 60th Celebration, our anniversary was last week for the city incorporation, which you can see up on our seal, July 17th, 1964. The event is planned for September 5th through the 7th. Thursday evening will be an enhanced version of Tunes at Tideland's, which is sponsored by our Active Adult Seniors Program. Friday will be an art and garden show with the Art Association of Morro Bay hosting and highlighting local artists, along with dahlias, which is our city flower. Saturday parade through town followed by a Founder's Day at Tideland's Park. Will be food and games, so save the date, and the rec department will be reaching out soon to the community and seeking participation. Thank you.
Well, after that list of things going on, that's pretty impressive. I just have a couple of small ones. This past Saturday was a fun day at the theater. The movie Goonies was on, and it was a fundraiser for Morro Bay and Bloom. And I was in line looking for, waiting to get popcorn, and I started chatting with a woman next to me, and it turned out that their family is from Hawaii, and they're over here visiting other family or friends. And this was already their third movie while they were here. So I thought that was interesting, how they're finding ways to spend their time here and enjoy our theater. Let's see, I also went to the library book sale, and as usual, I had donated a bunch of kids' books, and then I go to the sale and I ended up bringing six other books home on all different topics. And so it's sort of a wash in some ways, but it's a fun event. But that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Edwards? I think that the mayor and you have spoken to most of the things, but I'll just embellish some of them. Fourth of July was fabulous. I don't think I had done the bike parade for a few years, and it was just as fun as ever, especially felt quite defeatist when I saw Chief Watkins blow past me on her bike. I don't know where she was going, but man, you are a good rider. It was wonderful. The music was great, all the participation was great, going along the Embarcadero and having all the people just cheer you on and fist bump you as you're going. You know, this is a really good annual event, and I think more and more people from the community, as well as from other parts of the state, are coming out to this because it is more family-friendly. So I think that's wonderful. It's just another offering on the coast that they have here to choose. I also attended the movies at the Bay Theater, the fundraiser for Morro Bay and Bloom. Couldn't think of a better way than to see one of my favorite childhood films, The Goonies. It's just as good as ever, and I think the point where you see the ship come out of the rock just reminds me so much every day. It kind of makes me wonder what's going on in there. Anyway, the other one that I wanted to mention was the one that the mayor mentioned, the dinner, the League of, the Channel Counties Dinner at the Atascadero Zoo. I had never actually gone to the pavilion there. If you haven't, even if you just kind of walk in there and you're not in an event, it's absolutely beautiful. It's a stunning view of the lake. And there was a point where the mayor and I were sitting there, and the sun was going down, and the water was just like glass, and the moon was right there, just in front of us beaming. It was incredible. And so that was quite something to witness, just that view there. It's very special. And I was sad to say, when I stand up to speak on behalf of our city, that I had actually never been to the zoo. I remember walking through there and seeing the flamingos, but it was wonderful to see some of the other animals that they have there. And I really hope to wish them well and maybe coordinate some sort of effort with them on that project, the zoo. I think it's a great asset that we have here in our county, so I hope that you take the time to go visit. And lastly, this is something that I'm loving seeing between the fundraiser at the Bay Theater for Morro Bay and Bloom and the one that also happened Monday night for the Rock, was also extremely successful with the Big Lebowski. I'm seeing this wonderful collaboration that's happening between a business and a nonprofit organization or two, and business to business. I am really, having come from the chamber world, very, very excited to see this be a time of collaboration and collaborative, you know, conversation and promoting each other's businesses and not being fearful of what that looks like, but actually having it be a win-win scenario for both. So I'm really happy to see that. I can't say more. Thank you.
Councilmember Ford?
Thank you, Mayor Wixom. An effort to not repeat anything else that's been said, because there's a lot happening in Morro Bay and the surrounding areas, and I appreciate my colleagues also attending all of these. I'll just give you a heads up that I attended, I was the guest council member at the Morro Bay Chambers Government Affairs Committee, known as GAC. And our city manager, Yvonne Kimball, attended with me, and they wanted to talk about budget. And so we kind of gave them just the lowdown on what decisions have been made recently within our city budget, and among other questions that they had. And so that was a great, great meeting, I felt, that we had with those community members that are business owners and managers in our city. Also, I always enjoy every year volunteering for Project Surf Camp, and many of you probably are aware of what they do, but the city partners with this amazing organization, this nonprofit, that helps children of all abilities be able to surf and stand up paddleboard. It's a great experience, and I was doing the math, and I'm like, oh, my gosh, I've been doing this for over a decade, and every year it's just as rewarding and heartwarming. And yeah, so glad that that was, you know, we had another year of that, and I'll leave it there.
Thank you. Councilmember Landrum?
I don't, because of the remote meeting, I will, I attended some of the meetings that have been mentioned and events, and I will leave it at that.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I could, pursuant to AB 2449, I'd suggest that Councilmember Landrum provide an explanation for her just cause zooming in right now, which Councilmember Landrum and I conferred with before the meeting.
Thank you. Councilmember Landrum?
Yes, I wasn't sure because I missed the beginning of the meeting, but I am zooming in today remotely because I am in Texas on family business, childcare business for my family.
Thank you. And one last thing I did not include, and I forgot the other night also, is just to let the community know that the paving project has gone out to bid approximately $4 million, so we'll be happily awaiting some responses and look forward to putting some asphalt on the ground after Memorial, or after Labor Day, excuse me. City Manager Kimball?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just going to add a few things, there's so much going on. To follow up from prior meeting that we received concerns in the SCIF policy, this is Harbor related, want to let the council know, council and audience know that this concerned residents and citizens have a chance to meet with Harbor Department staff, and we're going to work something out. We're confident that the resolution will be amiable. And then the city clerk had updated the city website to reflect the election information, so for folks out there, please take a look at it. And I also want to just make a note on a update from our partner agency, which is Port San Luis, regarding offshore wind. It appears that Port San Luis Board is considering to enter into an exclusive agreement with a consultant called Clean Energy Terminal to conduct some, conduct feasibility studies and research for an OM operation and maintenance facility at their waterfront, state tightline waterfront. I have shared this information with the subcommittee, and I just thought that I'm just going to give a statement so that everybody can hear. That's it.
Thank you. Yes, I believe it was on the news today also. With that, we will go to the subcommittee reports, and I will start with our Community Development Director.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Erwin Singhwall, Community Development Director. So I have a subcommittee report on the Vistra Best Project. So Vistra's fiscal and economic study that we've been referring to as the Brattle Study, dated May 2024, is now posted on the city's community development webpage, the webpage for the Best Project on the top of the page. As you heard, city attorney announced on July 5th, city council, or excuse me, on July 5th, the city issued a request for proposals for a consultant to, one, peer review the Brattle Report, and, two, determine the fiscal and economic impact of the project when considering the increased cost to the city to service the Best Project if it were to be approved and constructed. The request for proposals closes on July 25th, and we've received at least one response so far. Then, as city attorney announced, the council did meet on July 10th to provide input on this city non-binding tentative response to Vistra's term sheet. The non-binding tentative response was sent to Vistra on July 17th. Currently, I am working with our consultants to develop a timeline for the processing of the Best Project through the city's entitlement process. As part of that process, I am scheduling, or working on scheduling a meeting with Coastal Commission staff to review their comment letter on the draft EIR. Coastal Commission staff did let us know that they are drafting a memo to the city that would outline, in their view, the coastal development permit process under the AB, under AB 205. And they would like to wait till that memo is complete before meeting with city staff to review and discuss their comment letter on the draft EIR. The email I received this afternoon from our Coastal Staff Planner said that they will be completing that memo and reaching out to us soon. So we'll see what exactly "soon" means, but it sounds like they're working on that, and we'll hear from them soon. And that concludes my update on the Best Project.
Thank you very much for that. I believe on our list, we have offshore wind energy, and there is nothing to update other than what the city manager just shared as far as some activity down at Port San Luis, and then water reclamation facility. Mr. Alex Snyder?
I can, I can feel you. We just met with city council in closed session regarding this issue, so we are going to continue work on this important issue.
Thank you very much.
Mary, for the offshore wind energy, the city's website is constantly being updated, so for folks who are interested in the information that the city received, we put them on the website, so please take a look at it.
Thank you very much. With that, we will move on to a presentation for Townsend Public Affairs, our legislative representatives for an update.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. My name's Eric O'Donnell with Townsend Public Affairs. It's a pleasure to be here tonight with everyone. I'm joined here by my colleague Spencer Street, who will introduce himself in a second. I want to thank the city council for being with us. We are the city-state legislative advocates and grant writers up in Sacramento. Tonight, we're here to give you a legislative update. Before I do that, you're probably used to seeing Andres Ramirez in our office as the one who gives you these updates. Andres has unfortunately departed our firm and moved on to a different path in Sacramento, but we wish him well, and we really do miss him. In the interim, I've been working for the city for the last month and a half or so in the transition. I handle a lot of our other coastal cities and like cities up and down the coast in California, including Laguna Beach and Pismo Beach. And so I came in to kind of right the ship after Andres, and we have fortunately hired Spencer to help bring some stability to this contract, so I'm happy to introduce him and would ask him to introduce himself to the council.
Perfect. Thank you, Eric. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Spencer Street, coming on as a new client manager and senior associate with Townsend Public Affairs. Just left the state legislature, was in there for about seven years, working for members in both the Senate and Assembly, so looking forward to working on behalf of the city in Sacramento.
And then, do we have the presentation being shared? Perfect.
Yes.
Thank you so much. Okay, next slide, please, and then Spencer, take it away.
Perfect. So right now, the Assembly and the Senate are in summer recess. Just before leaving for summer recess, the governor, meeting the constitutional deadline, signed the state budget on June 26th, and the legislature will come back into session on August 5th for a final sprint until the end of session on August 31st. Those last two weeks, they'll be in floor session only. They have about 1,700 or so bills left to go through before finishing for the year, and then the governor will have until September 30th to either sign or veto bills that are before him. And then outside of the legislative calendar, of course, on November 5th is the statewide general election. There are about 35 races where we will see new members coming into the Senate and Assembly. A couple Assembly members are running for Senate seats, but seeing some decent turnover again this year, and then also in the future, there'll be some, quite a few new members joining the legislature. Next slide, please. So a big issue this year the legislature focused on was the state budget. The state, after a record surplus last year, was hit with a pretty significant deficit, starting at about $38 billion in January, and then after tax revenues came in below projections after the tax filing deadline, the state was wrestling with a pretty sizable deficit. They took some actions early on to address the deficit with some fund shifts, a little bit of cuts, but not too much early on, but they were left with about $28.4 billion of a remaining budget problem. Next slide, please. Of course, to pass a balanced budget, the state had to address that issue. So there were quite a few options on the table, dipped into reserves a little bit, kept that, kept most of the rainy day fund intact. There was some borrowing between funds, spending delays into out years and shifts between special funds and other accounts, and then about $14.6 billion of actual spending reductions. Next slide, please. Legislatively, happy to report that Assembly Bill 2537 by Assembly Member Addis is doing well. It will create a new grant program to help local governments and tribes engage in offshore wind development. This will give them an opportunity to bring in some new resources, to maximize opportunities, and hopefully mitigate any challenges that they are seeing with offshore wind development. To fund this account, offshore wind leaseholders will be providing financial assistance to the fund so that local governments can access it. The bill is currently in the Senate Appropriations Committee after passing out of the Senate Natural Resources and Water Committee. And when the bill's in the assembly, Townsend sent over Andres. He presented with the author, and we've continued to offer support as the bill has moved through. We are also joined by the County of San Luis Obispo and the Slow Coast Alliance. And I will turn it over to Eric.
Thank you, Spencer. Next slide, please. The next bill I wanted to talk about tonight is AB 2560 by Assembly Member Alvarez. This is related to density bonus law in the coastal zone, probably one of the bigger coastal zone bills this year in Sacramento. Every year, you always see a couple bills targeted at the coastal zone. This one started relatively benign earlier in the year. The first draft really did just try to clarify in state law that density bonus law did, in fact, apply to the Coastal Act. There had been some, to the coastal zone, excuse me, there had been some confusion, interpretation in terms of whether or not density bonus law in housing projects would apply in the coastal zone. This provided that clarity. However, as the bill continued in the process, it received additional amendments as it went through policy committees, finally culminating right before the legislature left on summer recess into a series of large amendments to the bill that really do change the trajectory of what it intended. Right now, after the latest rounds of amendments, AB 2560 proposes to eliminate a section of public resources code that's been in law since the 80s that says that no local coastal program should be required to include housing policies and programs. So that was the protection against Coastal Commission coming in and requiring certain types of housing laws in the coastal zone. This bill now proposes to eliminate that protection. It's possible the Coastal Commission can now seize upon this authority in the future to be able to dictate certain housing policies and programs inside LCPs every time they're updated, which is, could be a problem for coastal cities up and down the state. And then finally, it did require all local governments in the coastal zone to update and submit amendments to their LCP by July 1, 2026. So that is a quick turnaround, as you know, you know, being part of LCPs is not a, it's not a quick process, it's very glorious, and sometimes it can be very costly as well. So the mandate by 2026 is a hefty burden to bear. So that bill took all the amendments and did narrowly pass its committee, or did get out of committee, I should say. However, it is still being met with some stiff opposition, including Cal Cities and several other coastal cities up and down the state. The author himself is not very happy with these amendments, frankly. He took them in order to keep his vehicle alive in the process, but as of right now, he is not supportive of his own bill because it is not something he wants to move forward, but understood he had to take it in order to get out of committee. So I do expect if this bill is going to move forward, there will be changes to it, or altogether, the bill might not move. So happy to answer any questions at the end about that. Next slide, please. Public safety legislation. Public safety has been a, probably one of the major hot buttons in Sacramento this year with the rise in retail crime and the publicity of retail crime, I should say, and retail theft, as well as fentanyl and drug use. There are some overlaps in those two categories. The legislature and the governor have not always agreed on this for this year, so there was quite a bit of fighting over what the right solution is to addressing retail theft and crime in California right now. The Assembly and the Senate didn't always agree on what they should be doing when it comes to addressing retail theft. But in general, there was a public safety legislative package that is still making its way through the legislative process. There's a lot of bills in this package. I'm not going to go through all of them, but the general themes of the bills are all around more enforcement and being able to arrest for shoplifting and misdemeanor crimes of stealing, even if they're not done in the presence of an officer themselves, or if they haven't seen it themselves, which was a loophole that was being used, as well as being able to aggregate different theft amounts to get up to that $950 threshold through separate counties. So as long as the DAs of each county are working together, they're able to kind of aggregate their charges. So as long as the DAs of each county are working together, they're able to kind of aggregate their charges to be able to charge felonies instead of misdemeanors for some of these crimes. And then the final one being theft from a vehicle. A lot of car break-ins have been reported in the last several years. There was a kind of a well-known caveat to that, that the car had to be locked in order for, proven that it was locked in order for it to be a crime. If it was unlocked, it was very easily dismissed instead of making it a misdemeanor. So those packages, those bills are still moving and do tie into a proposition we'll talk about in a second that have a different approach, but as of right now, they are moving to the legislature and are expected to pass and be signed into law by the governor. Next slide, please. Speaking of the ballot, moving on to the ballot, there are several ballot measures in November, as Spencer mentioned. I'm not going to go through all of them, but when it comes to those that might be the most impactful or most useful to know about, I wanted to just highlight a couple. Proposition four will be our climate bond that I'm sure you've heard a lot about. That number started around the $15 billion range. It went down to the negotiated and passed $10 billion. There is a lot of stuff in this climate bond. It is not just a water bond, not just a flood bond, not just a coastal bond. It really does have a little bit of everything, including park creation, outdoor access, heat mitigation, wildfire, as well as the typical drought response programs and safe drinking water, water recycling, et cetera. Proposition five is passed by the legislature. They used to be ACA 1, that the legislature debated several months ago, followed by a couple of amendments. But this would lower the voting threshold from 66% to 55% for bonds, for local bonds that could be used to support low-income housing or public infrastructure. So right now, that threshold at 66% is very difficult. As you can imagine, getting the public to support for bonds for public housing or infrastructure, but lowering that threshold to 55% to reflect what school districts currently have in their bonding system. They only need 55% right now. So it's making sure that those two are equal and allow it to be easier for local governments to raise that revenue should they choose to. Prop 33 would remove, repeal the Costa-Hawkins Rent Control Act to give all cities and counties the ability to enact rent control if they wanted to through ordinance. They wouldn't have to, just an option if they wanted to, but as of right now, it's limited to just charter cities. Proposition 36 is what I refer to with the retail theft. This is the district attorney-backed proposition that qualified for the ballot that rolls back significant portions of Proposition 47 in terms of what constitutes a misdemeanor versus felony and increasing sentences for certain drug crimes and theft crimes as a way to more maybe aggressively attack the retail theft and drug use problem we're seeing. And then famously, you probably already know, but not qualified from the ballot was the Taxpayer Protection and Government Accountability Act. I guess technically it did qualify, but it will not be on the ballot. The State Supreme Court removed that from the ballot because they deemed that it was not appropriately produced to the public. If it was a revision of California Constitution, it requires a constitutional convention, not just an initiative process. So the court did rule that it is not revising, or excuse me, it is not, it goes too far in terms of the initiative process. It really needed a constitutional convention if they wanted to make it work. So that is off the ballot, and the proponents of California Business Roundtable don't have enough time to re-qualify anything from the ballot with a constitutional convention. And then with that, or next slide, please. I think that might have been it. Yes, we're happy to answer any questions you may have about anything that we talked about or anything else going on in Sacramento.
Thank you very much for the update. Any questions? Nope. No questions. Thank you. The city manager has something.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to say that I didn't get a chance to introduce this group to the audience and council. I felt remiss about that, but I know Eric and Spencer are just going to do great jobs regardless of my introduction or not. But I do want to thank them for being here and bringing this update to us. They, I felt that their service is really beneficial for the city. There's so much going on in state legislation, and a lot of times, we don't, we just want to read her digest version. We don't have the time to read everything, to follow through, so they help us with that. We do, and the city is a part of the League of, California League of Cities. However, that's different, sometimes it's difficult to track as well. And so, for example, for one of the density bonus law, this bill, AB 2560, I initially asked League of Cities for some input, and there was, the response was not, there was very limited information. But with Townsend, they provide a whole analysis, and so that was very helpful, I want to say that. Also, Townsend helped us with grants, grant writing. It is my understanding that the Worf Project had greatly benefited from Townsend's service. They helped us secure some, secured additional, low-interest loan. Remind me, Emily, was it, thank you, thank you, thank you, SRF loans, and so those are very helpful. And also, most recently, we applied for a clean energy-related grant last minute. We were alerted with the lead, and we reached out to Townsend since it's included in the contract with them. So they helped us apply for the grant. We applied for, I'm thinking it's $200,000 for education and outreach and so on and so forth for offshore wind-related activities. And we did our application. Unfortunately, we were not awarded with the grant, but at least Townsend was able to help us to apply, go through the process, and with no additional fee. So I am very thankful for that. I just want to add this point that how Townsend and City Staff work together. They are also sending us grants updates. And Public Works Director Greg Colley has been communicating with Townsend staff and hopefully setting up regular calls so that if some grants come to us, that we, of our interest, and Greg can share with the rest of departments.
Thank you, thank you very much, and thank you for the presentation. We really appreciate it. Are they gone?
I believe they're going to stay.
They'll be here, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, they're going to stay for public comments.
We appreciate it, thank you.
We'll still be here.
Okay, thank you. With that, we'll move on to public comment. I have some speaker slips to start with, and I'll start with Aaron Oaks, followed by Robert Steiner, followed by Rich Robb, sorry for saying it wrong. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the council and staff. My name is Aaron Oaks, Morro Bay. I have some prepared remarks. My mom, Pamela Arment Oaks, was a trailblazer who proudly supported Morro Bay. Pam was involved in efforts to preserve our pristine coastline and marine life by working with local fishermen and environmentalists to oppose acoustic seismic testing. She also led efforts to ensure that every resident, every resident's voice was represented when the city proposed water and sewer rate hikes in 2018. She believed our seniors, residents on fixed incomes, deserve representation on taxation, land use, and the environment. Mom left us earlier this month, leaving behind an incredible legacy that touched the lives of many. But people like Ron Reisner and Marlis McPherson have said that residents like Pam are too informed, too uninformed actually, to vote on issues that matter. That's a shame. But then again, Ron and Marlis are not like us. Most of us recognize that every voice matters. Every vote matters. And every voice of concern over Vistra's controversial best project matters. It was one of my mom's final wishes that we come together, unified, as one community, to vote yes on Measure A 24, for local control, for Morro Bay, for Pam. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Robert Skinner. I was here at your previous meeting, and I spoke on behalf of a ceasefire. I'm here again, repeating my request that we engage in one. But I'd like to update you on where we have been with our engagement, on our civic engagement campaign for a ceasefire. We have spoke with Salud Carbajal. We have spoke with Jimmy Panetta. We have spoke with Senator Laird. We've gone to the Grover Beach City Council. We've gone to San Luis Obispo City Council. We've been here, and just last week, we spoke on two different occasions. We met two different occasions with Assemblymember Dawn Addus. I would describe the meetings as being fruitful. The first meeting, Assemblymember Addus, she listened and she learned. She learned that there are several members of the Palestinian community, not a lot, but very few, and they are indeed in pain. One member was Dr. Hani Al Azari. He has family, he had to flee from Gaza. He has family members that he's lost. 25 separate people. They didn't die, they were murdered. And this is something very significant. And then the next day, we, Ms. Ford was on the meeting with us, and she was introduced to Dana DeJani. Now, Ms. DeJani is an elderly woman. She had to flee the Nakba. And I don't know if you guys understand what the Nakba is, but that is basically the ethnic cleansing of the Palestinian community that started in 1948. 750,000 Palestinians had to flee their area. They've not been allowed to return. So anyway, for the most part, I'm looking forward to our meetings, and I think we're going to get somewhere with Assemblymember Addus. I'm hopeful of that. I've been disappointed with Carbajal, with Laird, with everybody else, and it's just going, why? You all know what's going on here. This is a genocide. But then it dawned on me, I don't think anybody really knows a Palestinian. And I'm going to ask a very awkward question of everybody in this room. I mean, everybody. How many of you have ever met a Palestinian? This is awesome. How many of you have actually had a meaningful discussion where you can like pronounce their name? And you can kind of say, oh yeah, okay, I know who you are. This is good. But I noticed of people in our power, none of you have. And this is not to shame you, but it is awkward, and it's also think, now if I were to ask the same question, how many of you have met Jews? Everybody'd say yes.
Thank you very much.
Know that. Okay, I hope you get my point. It's not to shame you, but it is, make sure that we can think about this. They're people.
I'm going a whole different direction. My name is Rich Robb. I've lived in Morro Bay for over 30 years, and I'm a member of Morro Bay Active Adults. And my particular position on that board is pickleball coordinator. And though it's not as serious as all your other issues that you have here, I would like to hope that the council would put on their agenda a proposal or whatever is necessary to get us the ability to pursue raising the money for four more courts. There's no need for me to raise money for courts that I can't build. So I just need you guys to think about it and see how you could implement that so that we can say, I've sent a drawing that shows where we would put the courts and where we'd have to move the basketball courts and to the engineering department. I've also shared it with maintenance, and I think I've sent a few letters out here as well. But I just need you to get it on the agenda and get it approved to pursue the building of four more courts at Delmar Park. Right now, we are overstaffed, overpacked, day-long. The week of July 4th, we have four permanent courts, two temporary courts, and they were all packed out with four to six people waiting on each court. And it's good revenue for the city. One of the residents, one of the visitors from the East Coast came and said, he was taking pictures. What are you doing? I said, can I help? He says, well, I just had to come see it. What are you talking about? And he said, you're in the magazine, didn't tell me which one. He said, you were in the 10 top most-wanted places to play pickleball in the United States. Kind of silly, isn't it? But it shows how much draw there is to it. We have a great climate, we have a good community, we have lots of hotels and restaurants. It's a fun game. If you haven't done it, please come. I teach it Saturday mornings at 8:30, and it's a lot of fun. And it relieves some of the pressure that I hear you all under. So that's all I have. Thank you. Oh, no, one more thing. The bike parade, I was able to ride with my great-granddaughter in my first bike parade, so I really appreciated that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, I have David Yo, followed by Linda Winters and Rachel Wilson.
Good evening, Mayor Wixom, council members. I'd like to come here and just say, gosh, you guys have been doing a great job. This city, I love it. Everybody's wonderful here, and it's great. There are so many issues that are just tearing me up right now. I'd like to talk about the ceasefire in Gaza. And I'd like you to know that as long as we don't speak out that we didn't stop Israel from bombing hospitals and schools, and so when the retaliation comes, keep in mind that the resistance is going to bomb, with our permission now, hospitals, schools, and aid workers. But I don't want to talk about that. My big concern right now is that the lack of humanity that I see in the Central Coast and what you guys feel about the residents of Morro Bay and our visitors that come to spend their time and their money. The Embarcadero is very narrow, and on a good sunny day, it's very difficult to get out and away from the rock. And when we have a lithium fire, there's going to need to be an evacuation plan. And I don't know if you and the police and fire department and the Coast Guard have worked out a plan for us, but there should be a plan that should be in every hotel room in the city and not at the expense of the hotel owners. If and when the time comes that a lithium fire forces evacuations, there needs to be an evacuation center where we can all go and claim safety and also be housed and fed and get medical attention until we are allowed to return to our homes or, in the case of our visitors, to their hotels to get and collect their belongings. And that might be a long time. And that should not be on our expense if it's a lithium fire. That should be Vistra paying for everything in real time, not somewhere down the line. And there needs to be, at this center, an ability to file claims for long-term for the people who are the residents, the seniors who can barely hobble to get around but live here comfortably if they're forced, when they're forced. We're going to need your help to get them out of here and the people in the harbor that are living aboard their boats. We're going to need you to help them to get to safety and not at their expense. Please, show me an escape plan. Thank you very much. And you guys are doing a wonderful job, really. This is a lot of stuff you've got to deal with.
My goodness, I'm one of those little old seniors. Hi, I'm Linda Winters, 30-year resident here. Hi, I'm Linda Winters, thirty-year resident here in Morro Bay. Seems like it's been a very long time since we've been together. But it's only been thirty days. My goodness, so much has happened in that short amount of time. Of course, there was the Fourth of July. I managed a very, very brief view of the bike parade. I'm sorry, Ms. Chief Amy. She was on a chase. It must have been well-attended because there were cars parked all the way up and down Main Street for people that were walking all the way down to Tylenol's Park. It was well-attended. Another set of events that has happened, excuse me, here. Four Monday night dinners where two-hundred-and-eighty people throughout that four-week period have attended, had dinner, came for food, clothing, food bank, a nourishing hot meal. And I'm glad the city is still sponsoring this. It's been going on for ten years now. One of our sponsors, the San Luis Food Bank, gave us a case of COVID tests. They're sitting on that back table back there. Please feel free to grab as many of them as you can. I understand that COVID tests at the stores now run for about $10. This is free, so grab them. And one last thing, well, actually two. I had said I was going to avoid the Embarcadero at all costs. And I did up until today. And I went down to celebrate a friend's eighty-third birthday party, so I couldn't hardly avoid it. But it took me an hour to get down there and back. Enough said. And we all know about the horrific heat waves that everybody's been experiencing inland. And I've been trying very hard not to gloat too much to all the rest of the world. But I was in town and doing some shopping for the Monday night dinners at one of the stores. And there was a gentleman that was standing in line and just at the top of his lungs saying, I hate this fog. I just absolutely hate this fog. And a little guy in front of me stepped up to him and he said, well, mister, if you hate this fog so much, then go home. And I gave that kid a big hug because he really deserved it. Thank you for your time.
Linda is hard to follow. Madam Chair, council members and staff, my name is Rachel Wilson. I am very fortunate to get back from vacation. My flight took off twelve minutes before the massive computer shutdown. But when I arrived back, someone said I had to read the Braddl report because Morro Bay had hit the jackpot. So I read the beginning and it says, "This report shows that the BEST project would generate substantial tax revenues that would materially impact the city's budget. In addition to the one-time payment of approximately $11.4 million, the city would receive approximately $1.3 million in additional tax revenues per year over the first ten years of the BEST project." And the first thing that came to my account in mind was, will this even cover the cost of the additional fire personnel and station equipment? At the Vistra's 424 meeting, Brad Watson from Vistra spoke about how they upgraded the Moss Landing Fire Department. Quote, "What we did, we put forth money unilaterally until the fire department had the adequate funding through the tax mechanism." So in other words, you have to pay for the fire department with taxes to fund the additional positions. It turns out that the Monterey County Fire Department needed to hire eight new firefighters. So I looked at Transparent California. According to Transparent California, in 2022, the average cost of a firefighter in Morro Bay with all benefits was $195,000. In 2024, we could reasonably expect that the cost would be $200,000. Or for eight new firefighters, the salary cost would be $1.6 million per year. The city, according to Braddl, would receive $1.3 million in additional tax revenues, which is a $300,000-per-year shortfall. I am presuming that Morro Bay would also need a new fire station or at least some fire engines. So I looked up the cost of new fire stations. In Santa Rosa, a new fire station is costing $900 per square foot. I've been told that building a new house in Cayucas is costing $850 a square foot. So that makes sense. And they spent $21 million. Portero spent $13 million. And the new Cal Fire Station costs $10 million. Fire engines cost $2 million. So $12 million minimum? There goes the one-time payment of $11.4 million. Thank you.
I have one speaker slip left for Dolores Howard. And after that, public comment is open without slips.
Good evening. My name is Dolores Howard and I'm a resident of Paso Robles. So the first thing I need to do is say yes. I notice the difference in degrees here. And also the beautiful view. I got here five minutes early and just walked to the end of the street here. Oh, my goodness, can I take this home with me? And congratulations on the sixtieth anniversary of the city's incorporation. As I listen to the voices here tonight, it's beautiful to hear a community speaking about pickleball, about food and COVID tests and meeting the basic needs as well as addressing some very serious concerns. And I love that this community can do that and can really turn things over and look at them all which way and decide what's best for compassion for our fellow human beings. And speaking of compassion, there's another part of the world where people are suffering and suffering deeply. And that is in Gaza. We're probably looking at close to 200,000 people dying directly or indirectly from that war that has been going on for almost a year now, ten months. And I ask that your council, that the community, and I'm from the outside coming in today, but I ask that you consider turning one more issue over and over, looking at it, thinking in terms of compassion, and proposing a ceasefire resolution from the city of Morro Bay would mean a lot to communities like yours across the globe that are suffering deeply. Thank you.
Hello, council and staff. I'm Margaret Carmen. And I know I'm breaking the rule because I have to go see an emergency person. I'm speaking on item 9A. And I actually wrote notes today. Amazing. I disagree with the conclusion of the staff report on the Downtown Design District report. The public was told that there would be a second meeting for we, the public, to comment on the findings and the conclusions that the Downtown Design District Ad-Hoc Committee made. They met after our first meeting and then we were told we could have a second meeting to hear what they came up with. We have not been given the opportunity for this input. Therefore, please, this report is incomplete and unfair. And I'm asking for you not to vote on 9A tonight. What is allowed to be done in our downtown area will affect Morro Bay, its residents, and our tourists for many, many decades to come. Please allow we, the public, our promised input. Thank you.
Slide one, please. Morro Bay, as the lead agency for the BEST project, should practice, one of their practices, leading practices, should be safety. It turns out that in the coastal zone, toxic gas surf inversions occur frequently. High surf creates very low thermal inversions, magnifying toxic battery smoke and gas. Slide two, please. Case in point, Moss Landing Tesla Megapack plus surf inversion on September 20th, 2022. The Tesla fire at Moss Landing created a surf-generated toxic inversion layer causing the shutdown of Highway One and a shelter-in-place notice for over twenty-four hours. Slide three, please. There are many technical papers showing that surf and low-level inversion layers exist. Slide four, please. If we had a surf inversion toxic smoke from just one Tesla Megapack near the Embarcadero on a busy day, it would cost $1.7 million a day in lost revenue for the Embarcadero if the Embarcadero had to be shut down. Lead agency BEST practice requires most compatible environmental choices be made for the kind of BEST that you're looking for. And I would propose that the city should look at iron-water-rust batteries because they are receiving credits from the California Energy Commission because they have a longer cycle time than two to four hours like the Tesla car batteries. Secondly, I would look into liquid air BEST. That's liquefied air as a storage medium. No emergency response plan. And it's compatible with visitor-serving commercial zoning. Liquid air BEST could be housed in the historical PG&E turbine building. Well, in the future, in the days ahead, I'm going to bring before you a discussion about energy returned on energy invested. What this basically means is what it costs you to operate the system throughout the life cycle in fossil fuel-related CO2 pollution. There's a big difference between lithium battery storage and some of these other systems that have a much longer life cycle and lower recycle costs. I have seen no recycle costs with the battery storage system, with the lithium ion battery system. That's it for me, thanks. That's all I can get in tonight. Good night.
Good evening, Council, Barry Brennan. I'm here to say thank you for a fantastic team we have. Along Quintana Road, we had a big cleanup that went on with citizens. And our mayor, with her staff, with Amy Watkins, Fire Department, Police Department, and the Fire Department, they worked with a fire safe council to clean out the ditch. And also, we prodded the Caltrans. And I don't know if many people watch it like I do, but Caltrans has had a fantastic crew down in the Quintana Road. They've cleaned out encampments that were on the Caltrans side of the fence. They're replacing quite a little bit of fence, putting in new posts, seven feet high. They've cleaned out the remnants of the trash that was in the ditch. And we're talking all the way from the roundabout headed towards the ocean. So I just want to say thank you for the continuous work. You've got to call up Caltrans, can you come today? And I talked to the biologist from the Caltrans and they said they were really glad to be here. They had a lot of other work to do. But I want to say thank you for the fantastic work that's being done. And it looks like it's going to be very finely cleaned up. Thank you.
Good evening. My statement is a question. I'm wondering about, now that summer is within earshot of slowing down summer, at least for the school kids. School begins August 15th. Could you let the public know when the paving will begin for our streets and where that's going to be and how we're going to be noticed? Thanks.
A few weeks ago, we celebrated a relative freedom won through political violence only for our so-called leaders to denounce it not long after. I am never surprised to hear denouncements of violence from those that owe everything to it. People seem to think that violence can be monopolized. The primary force protecting those at the top from the violence they've wrought is also the primary domestic agent of political violence, law enforcement. Thirty-six-year-old Sonia Massey found out what happens to the weak when they fail to be obedient. And thirteen-year-old Yam Wei forgot that when you run away, true predators will kill you. As someone who was raised with a rifle in their hands despite preferring flowers or the hand of a friend, I'm no stranger to violence and threats of violence. Just as the Palestinians have, for generations, been forced to pick up arms to prevent their own oblivion and have come together in the spirit of unity to defend their right to exist, I find myself having to remain ever vigilant to prevent violence being done against me or myself having to do it against somebody else. When I was writing my last speech, I had to take time to consider whether or not surreptitiously reaching into my bag or thrusting my fist into the air would be seen as threatening. At this range, Watkins wouldn't have time to properly assess a threat. If her hand had gone for the gun at her hip, I would have had to choose what to do in less time than it would take her to draw, aim, and fire. Tactical assessments are not my favorite thing. One way you could address a society steeped in violence would be to heed the International Court of Justice and at the very least, cease our continued use of the Motorola L6Q automated license plate readers through which we are officially funding an ongoing genocide, a crime with universal jurisdiction. From the Axis of Resistance to the streets of Bangladesh or Kenya and the sudden resistance of cities like Leeds or tomorrow's Day of Rage in DC, people are tiring of being ground into the dirt. We had a chance four years ago for you to give us what we needed. As it is, today's wheat pasting may become tomorrow's blinding of the cyclops. And when it does, I'm going to be here to tell you, I told you so.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, city staff, and fellow residents. My name is Jeff Echols and I'm a resident of North Morro Bay. As our city manager alluded to earlier tonight, election season has started for the city of Morro Bay. With that in mind, I am excited and happy to formally announce the kickoff of my campaign for Morro Bay City Council. After faithfully serving our community in several capacities over the last twenty years, I would like to earn the privilege of representing the citizens of Morro Bay on the council. I've named my campaign Respect Our Past, Protect Our Future. And I'd like to share a summary of my value statement for my campaign. Respect Our Past, Protect Our Future is dedicated to maintaining the character of Morro Bay while embracing the promise of tomorrow. I believe in a community where residents, businesses, and visitors can thrive together. By respecting our history and making wise choices for the future, we can ensure that Morro Bay remains the exceptional place we all love. If you'd like a copy of my complete value statement, I can be reached via email at jeffformorobaycitycouncil@gmail.com. That's Jeff and then the numeral four, morobaycitycouncil@gmail.com. I'm going to say it one more time. Thank you for all the work that you do up there. I hope to be up there someday to serve the residents of Morro Bay. And I look forward to earning your vote for city council. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and Staff. Terry Simons, good to be back. Seems like it's been a while. In my normal nitpicky way, I just wanted to comment on item 5A, the Townsend Public Affairs update. There was no staff report, and there was nothing to judge the value of the report that we got from Townsend because there's nothing to indicate what the cost of their annual contract is. So hopefully, going forward, when we have these kinds of presentations, we'll have some perspective on what we're getting and what we're paying for it. I have other comments coming up on other items tonight, so I'll just leave you with that. Thank you.
AGP, are there any hands in the queue? Raised hands?
One moment. We have no raised hands online.
Thank you very much with that. I will bring it back to council. Seeing no one else, I will close public comment. Rich, I would encourage you to reach out to Public Works and the Recreation Manager to see if you can get on their agendas for one of those two departments and their meetings to talk pickleball. And Betty, we did talk about the paving just real quickly. The resolution for the city of Morro Bay does not allow paving until after Memorial Day through Labor Day, and it has gone out to bid. It's a little over $4 million contract that is currently out to bid right now. So with that, I will move on to public comment for the consent agenda items on the consent agenda. Public comment is open.
Betty Winholtz, I would be remiss not to thank you so mightily for protecting our library. All of you reached out. We have done that. You have done that. Appreciate the community for speaking up, for Lori Allen for noticing us, and thank you for that gift.
Suddenly occurred to me, there's a whole list of things on the consent agenda. Terry Simons, once again. Update on the Ironman event contract. I would hope that eventually we'll see a complete evaluation of the positives and minuses. I move around the community quite a bit and talk to a lot of people. I'm getting mixed signals, but the majority of people that I talk to are just as happy to have Ironman not coming back. I'd like to know that the cost to the city was at least balanced by whatever income Ironman paid us. I don't have much to say about the League of California Cities' opposition to the bill, but I do have good things to say about the appointment of James Costanzo, Recreation Parks Commissioner. He did a great job leading us in the flags loop tonight. So we're off and running. And that'll be it for now. Thank you.
Anyone else for a public comment on the consent agenda? AGP, are there any raised hands?
No, Mayor, there are no raised hands.
Thank you very much. With that, I will bring it back to council and close consent agenda. Does anyone want to pull anything?
Mayor, I would like to pull 7E.
Councilmember Landrum? Anything to pull?
Hold on one second. I have it... It's really hard to view the agenda and this at the same time. I would like to pull 7C quickly.
Thank you. With that, I will ask for a motion for... I will ask for... There you go. I will ask for a motion for approval of 7A through F minus C and E.
I motion to approve consent agenda items 7A through B, D, and F.
I'll second that.
Thank you. And roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Landrum?
Oh, hi. Yes.
And Mayor Wicksum?
Yes.
Motion carries five oh.
Thank you. 7C, Councilmember Landrum?
I just wanted to bring this up because I am so proud of our community for standing up for our Friends of the Library, and I feel like I'm just so happy about the outcome of this. And I know it took a lot of effort. It was... I'm really proud of our council for all banding together and being unified on this issue to support the Friends of the Library as well as all the different community members that wrote in. And I would also really like to thank our mayor for calling in, contacting Bruce Gibson. And yeah, I just wanted to highlight that, that's all, short and quick. And if anyone else has anything to say, or if they don't have anything to say, then I would like to move that we pass Agenda Item 7C.
Thank you. I think you probably...
I just want to add, I thought it was not funny, but when I had emailed our supervisor, Bruce Gibson, he immediately came back with, you know, everybody's contacting me from your council, essentially. And so I think that, that was even before we had a discussion on a united stance and, you know, letter. So it just shows, you know, I just wanted to echo what Mayor Protem Landrum just said, that we have a passionate group here.
I agree. And I really do appreciate Supervisor Gibson's support on this, recognizing our community's love for their library, like any community. So I definitely appreciate his position on that. Thank you. I will second that motion and ask the city clerk for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Landrum?
Yes.
And Mayor Wicksum?
Yes.
Motion carries five oh.
Thank you. 7E, Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, I'd like to pull it because I need to recuse myself from this item due to a legislative conflict.
Thank you. Anyone else have any other comments on 7E? I will move approval of 7E and ask for a second.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Landrum?
Yes.
And Mayor Wicksum?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you. And with that, before we move on to our business item, I would just like to offer James an opportunity to come up real quick since we are not interviewing you. And thank you for accepting the appointment to the Parks Commission. I didn't know if there was anything you'd like to share.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Thanks for considering me for this position. I believe it's an honor, and I hope I can serve the community well, and I appreciate all the support that I've had from the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We have two business items, no public hearings, but I think we're going to be a little bit of time spent in our downtown design district recommendations. I'll call for a five-minute break, and we'll be back. Thank you. Thank you very much. If we could resume. Thank you. With this, we're going to move on to our business item, 9A, Downtown Design District Recommendations, and I will turn it over to our Community Development Director. Mary Lynn?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, Mary Lynn Singwall, Community Development Director. And as we pull up the PowerPoint here, I will be giving a report out on the Downtown Design District Ad Hoc Subcommittee, as well as presenting recommendations developed by the interim Community Development Director, Michael Codran, while he was here, based on his work with the DDD Ad Hoc Subcommittee. So I'd like to just start off defining and, you know, mapping the area that we're talking about here. This is a map that was developed with the Ad Hoc Subcommittee. It is not out of the zoning code. The zoning code doesn't currently have a map of a downtown district. However, the boundaries of this district as defined here does take its inspiration from the Waterfront Downtown Strategic Plan, which does have mapping of the downtown area. There are some minor differences, but essentially, this is what's shown as the downtown area in the strategic plan. So as far as background, so as I'm sure the council is aware, this discussion was initially spurred on by the building height discussion and zoning code amendments, which led to a discussion on what I consider kind of a classic land use planning situation or objective, which is, you know, how to increase needed housing and economic development, how to, you know, create downtown vitality while at the same time preserving community character and views. I think that was really the crux of the task for the Subcommittee. On February 14th, 2023, the council formed the Ad Hoc Downtown Design District Subcommittee consisting of councilmembers Landrum and Edwards. This slide here just summarizes the meeting. So between October 2023 and May 2024, there were eight separate Ad Hoc Subcommittee meetings. And I want to point out and recognize as well, while I wasn't part of these meetings, they also included, in addition to the council Subcommittee members, it included participation from community members and additional folks. So that included Planning Commissioners Bill Roshan and Joseph Agrafia, Jeff Echols, Paul Boclair, Betty Winholtz, and Carrie Rea. So they're listed in the memo as advisors, and they were part of the Ad Hoc Subcommittee. And so even though I wasn't present at these meetings, I want to thank them for their time and commitment to this effort. I will also point out that I did invite the Ad Hoc Subcommittee members to a meeting with myself on Friday, last Friday, to help me understand, since I wasn't in these eight meetings, I wanted to hear from the Subcommittee members to just understand the dialogue that went around each of these recommendations and topics that were covered in Michael Codran's memo. Unfortunately, only three members of the eight were able to attend on Friday, and I was able to meet separately in the afternoon of Friday with a fourth member. And even though we didn't have the full Subcommittee or even a majority attend on Friday, I think it was a very helpful, productive discussion to help at least get me up to speed on the dialogue on these really important planning issues. So the work of the Downtown Design District Subcommittee started with a community forum. And as included in the memo before you, there was a poll that was conducted as part of that forum. And I know this is probably very difficult to read, but just to summarize kind of the main themes that emerged from the community forum and the polling was the interest or need for additional housing, as well as increased vitality of the downtown, opposition to short-term rentals, and of course, the importance of preserving the existing community character. So the five recommendations outlined in the memo in this evening's report prepared by the interim director, Codran, are centered around these five different planning topics: housing, character-defining buildings, view protection, process improvement, and economic development. And I'm going to go into each one of these. So starting with recommendation one regarding housing, just to define this recommendation is really based on the goal of promoting housing and mixed use in the downtown. And while, and I don't have a lot of firsthand knowledge of the discussion around the building height increase, I do recognize that that was kind of predicated on an opportunity to increase the potential for housing and mixed-use development in the downtown. The recommendation is to identify appropriate sites, to work with affordable housing developers to identify appropriate sites within the downtown area for housing and mixed-use development. And I should point out now that the recommendations really are focusing on actions that the Community Development Department can accomplish within our existing resources. These are immediate actions we can start to work on now versus some of the longer-term initiatives that would potentially require zoning code updates and having to go through the LCP amendment process, which can be both expensive and time-consuming. So as Michael Codran developed these recommendations, again, he was focusing on, you know, what can we reasonably accomplish to incrementally move the needle, make progress on these topics within existing resources. In addition, the other recommendation regarding housing was to encourage use of the Density Bonus Ordinance, which is a tool that is already available in the city's zoning code and consistent with state law. It does provide for a way to provide concessions or waivers to zoning standards such as height requirements in exchange for deed-restricted affordable housing and the exact percentage of affordable housing or the exact percentage of the project that has to be affordable will vary based on the number of concessions that are being sought by the developer. But that's an existing tool now to allow for increases in height, and then the trade-off is deed-restricted affordable housing. Then you'll see on each of these five recommendation slides, on the bottom, I have highlighted in yellow text an initiative that the Community Development Department is currently working on that is addressing this topic. So on the topic of housing, currently, the department, you know, based on direction and discussion at the council a couple months ago, we're working on implementing the short-term rental ordinance and working with the council on revisions to the short-term rental ordinance as determined necessary once we start off, once we kick off the implementation. We have just finalized our contract with HDL and Deckard, consultant who is going to assist with the enforcement of short-term rental ordinance. In addition, on the topic of housing, so the department is in the process of finalizing what we call a pre-reviewed or pre-designed ADU plans, accessory dwelling unit plans. These are pre-prepared plans that have been pre-plan-checked by the Building Division and will be available to builders to be able to submit and pull construction permit. And the idea is to be able to reduce some of the time and costs associated with permitting and constructing ADUs, which again aligns with the goal of housing. Next topic is character-defining buildings, the goal to preserve and promote locally-important historic architecture. And that kind of incremental recommendation on this topic is, you know, while we have this long-term objective that's spelled out in the general plan to develop a historic preservation ordinance, Implementation Action C1, something that the department could start on now is working with the Historical Society to develop a preliminary survey and inventory of character-defining features within the downtown area. And then the city has existing regulatory documents such as guidelines and standards that we can rely on when we use this inventory. So we'll have the inventory from the Historical Society to identify the character-defining buildings, and that becomes a tool that's available to help us apply the existing city guidelines. And again, that's a way to be able to make some progress on this without having to go through that more expensive, long-term effort of developing historic preservation ordinance, or I should say, as we're developing historic preservation ordinance, which is listed as a short-term city goal and something that the department will be working on. Recommendation three, view protection, so preserve views of key scenic resources. The incremental recommendation is to incorporate discussion of visual resources into the waterfront master plan update. So I believe the council and many in the public are aware that the city has this great opportunity to receive a grant from the Coastal Commission to fund an update to the waterfront master plan. And once that process starts, it will certainly involve identifying the important coastal resources on the waterfront area, and that'll be a tool that's available. resources on the waterfront area, and that'll be a tool that's available as we review the development projects through the discretionary permit process. Recommendation number four is process improvement. This is really centered mostly on making the process more predictable for developers. There's discussion in the recommendations that, of course, the time of the permit process adds a lot of cost and uncertainty sometimes to the development process. The recommendation is to, and this is something, you know, coming in as a new community development director, is really important to me, is to understand the, you know, existing baseline of how long it's taking to process the coastal development permit. On average, of course, you know, there will be a range depending on the project, but I would like to start by identifying what is that baseline, so we know which direction we're going, and then we can start to look at if there's any reasonable ways to help streamline that process. But first, figure out what's the timeframe and make that public for developers when they plan their projects. Something else that, you know, fits within this topic of process improvement that I wanted to announce is we are working with our GIS team to launch an online GIS hub that will be available to the public and builders alike to have a quick online access to zoning and other, you know, key boundaries and features to help them plan and prepare projects. Then finally, recommendation five is economic development to increase vitality, revenue, and employment. Essentially, the recommendation here is, you know, as the city makes progress on economic development efforts, look at how those efforts can be focused in the downtown area, focused on the traditional economic development, you know, business retention and expansion programs, and also as funding is available, and streetscape improvements can assist as well with economic development. And as of course, the council is aware, the city is working with the Chamber of Commerce on economic development currently. So this slide does summarize those current community development department efforts that are in progress related to each of the topics of the Downtown Design District. And so again, implementing and revising the short-term rental ordinance, pre-designed ADUs, historic preservation ordinance, while we haven't had a chance to start on that yet, that is part of implementing the general plan, and it's a short-term goal and will be a major focus of the community development department. Waterfront master plan update, again, I think that's a really exciting opportunity where there actually will be a funding source to be able to move forward with that. Online GIS hub for the public and continuing to work with the Chamber on Economic Development. With that, the staff recommendation is to receive this update on the Downtown Design District ad hoc subcommittee meeting summary and direct staff to proceed with recommendations outlined in the report and affirm the satisfactory completion of the council ad hoc subcommittee assignment. And that concludes the staff presentation.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Well, we'll start with council member Edwards and Mayor Protem Landrum, I think, weighing in here for a few minutes before we go to questions. Thank you. Councilmember Landrum, would you like to kick off?
I'm sure. You mean not to ask questions of staff right now to just comment on the process?
No, no, I didn't. If you had something you wanted to share from the committee or if you just want to go into questions?
Oh, well, I feel like it was such a rewarding experience to get to know and work with the committee, the subcommittee. I feel like we, it was a huge undertaking. There were so many different topics that we delved into, and to really come to real findings on them was difficult in that short amount of time we were allowed or we allowed ourselves. And it feels like there are some unanswered questions that we got to. And as far as questions for staff, I wanted to, well, first of all, compliment Eirlin. That was a great example of jumping in, and you really did a good job of explaining that. But I do have a couple of questions. I first want to tell you, thank you for clarifying the map in the agenda because that was confusing to me, and if it was confusing to me, I think it would have been confusing to the public. And so I appreciate your doing that. And then I wanted to ask you, I wasn't clear on why the waterfront master plan has anything, would have anything to do with the views downtown.
Thank you for that question, councilmember Landrum. I think that's a very fair question. I can see how that wouldn't be immediately clear. So I think, you know, that was one of the recommendations outlined in interim director Codran's memo, and my understanding of it is that through the process of the waterfront master plan update, that will include identifying those, you know, important coastal scenic resources that we would then want to protect as at some point in the future, we identify key viewing angles within the downtown area. And I think some of those are probably, you know, fairly obvious, such as Moro Bay and the harbor. But again, that update to the waterfront master plan will be taking inventory of those important, you know, coastal resources. And then again, once we get into the downtown design efforts, we would look at the critical views of those resources.
Okay, and in the staff report, it mentioned that the building, I mean, that the view is important from the street level and from the sidewalk. I just wanted to also make sure that it was clear that it's, that is the entrance to Moro Bay, really, and I think the view is equally important from a vehicle, which most people drive around in and all of our tourists arrive in. And so it's important to know that that view is not just somewhere you could go and stand and look at the view, and that would take care of it. I think it's important to realize that we need to think about how this looks to visitors and to people that live here driving around. It really adds to their enjoyment and quality of life. And on recommendation number three, I was wondering if the option of either adding a downtown, the Downtown Design District Subcommittee or another subcommittee to evaluate these viewing areas has been taken into consideration rather than waiting for the waterfront master plan?
So I could respond to that. So, you know, the part of the recommendation is to rely on the waterfront master plan. I think the other part of the incremental recommendation outlined here is to start an effort to identify those, you know, critical viewing angles of the scenic visual resources. So that is something that we are proposing in these recommendations. We haven't had a chance yet to really flesh out exactly what that process would look like, but that again is part of the recommendation to start that effort.
Okay. All right. Well, I'm good for now. I will, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Edwards.
Mayor Protem Landrum, it's very hard to follow with that cuteness there. I wanted to also take a moment to thank all the members that were on this ad hoc committee. You were all passionate. You brought different perspectives to the conversation, different expertise. And I also want to thank, we had three planners on this, which is quite incredible that we even got through to this side, quite frankly. And to be able to have that continuity of information come through in this report, Mr. Singhwald, is really great to see. I think it's important to note, as is said in the report, that this really ad hoc committee came out of a, kind of was birthed out of the idea of discussing further the height and how it was taken by the previous council from 30 to 37 feet. And I think that that was the main impetus of this committee, and we did achieve that part of the scope of work when we committed by full council to lower that height from 37 back to 30 in a previous meeting. So I'm happy that we got to that part, but out of this conversation came many other items, hence the motion that this council put forth and the creation of this ad hoc committee. I think at this point, what we are really getting at is whether or not we've gotten through the amount of work that the committee wanted to get through. Did we get to the desired outcomes that we were trying to achieve? It's complicated. This was a lot of information to try to take in, a very broad discussion, and a lot of complexities to it, a lot of learning curves. I know there was, on behalf of myself, quite a bit of learning curve here in the discussion. And again, I think those of you in the group who provided us a lot of that information in addition to the people that came in and spoke with us as guest speakers. One thing that I did want to mention was that I did feel that we got to a really strong framework in this committee to then work off of. Also, in looking back at the Plan MB or the Downtown Waterfront Strategic Plan portion of it, that how complimentary the work that we did in this committee actually is to that 2016 document. And so it kind of brought up in my thinking, you know, this is definitely this work, this report that was put together by Mr. Codran and then presented here tonight, should be absolutely referenced to when we not only go into talking about, or having, which hopefully sooner than later, if we get the grant money, into the process of the waterfront master planning. But we also have, I always get concerned, and I've mentioned this many times here, I get concerned about how many documents and wonderful community workshops and things that we've done in the past, like we did in 2016, how it kind of gets shelved and doesn't get looked at and compared in contrast to the wonderful work that a group like this just did. And I would hope that that would not happen here. I really appreciate that the items that came out of the conversation, the historical preservation item, including the short-term rental, having unlimited in the downtown, there were lots of policy conversations that came out of this ad hoc committee too. And I feel comfortable with what was addressed here in this report and that the staff is indeed pursuing and working on those as we speak. So I'm happy with that. What else? I think the last thing that I would probably want to mention is that I was looking back because there was some desire put forth in having this group meet again and be able to report out or in a community forum-type environment. And I have to tell you, I did look back in my notes and in the framework that we were originally presented as a group when we worked with Scott Graham, October 4th, it was presented in that framework that we would have six meetings, of which we had more than six, and that there would also be two public forums, one of which was completed. We did that, and we got quite a bit, in fact, it was well-attended. If I'm recollecting properly, I think it was very well-attended. And we did get that input, as you saw in the chart tonight in this report. And, but we did not have the following or follow-up public forum that would allow for this community to draw in some of the information that I just put out, as well as have the opportunity with staff and the summary here to either fill in some gaps that may not be there or to allow and/or to allow for the community at large to add to it. Again, I would love to see this be a document, a living document, that is used and referenced in when we look at the 2016 Downtown Waterfront Strategic Plan and when we go into, hopefully sooner than later, the waterfront master planning. So having said that, I would like to see us allow for, with staff, to do a public forum to allow for this committee to feel and that their work is given out to the community, and if there is anything that we need to address could be addressed then, and that could be then added to this report. So that's where I'm going to leave it.
Councilmember Barton, questions, input?
I don't have any questions. I was just so, I was so pleased to see the way that this was put together and how things were highlighted, and it's nice and neat, it's easy to follow. It's, I think it's a great, a great start.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that the gist of it came from the height discussion, but a lot of these things wrapped in from the goals that we had with the short-term rentals, with the historic preservation, all that gave us the framework to start it. And, you know, it's just now, how do we make this implementation? So councilmember Ford?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I was going to ask about the development of the historic preservation ordinance. I know this is one of our short-term actions under our community engagement goal, and I'm just curious, I feel like we haven't really approached the historical preservation ordinance yet, and I know our staff is like strapped, but at the same time, I'm kind of curious, would this be like the first step in entering into that preservation ordinance, developing that historic preservation ordinance? Or was there another step that's been taken that I've just missed?
Well, there was the, there was the original submittal that had been done with the group from the historic preservation
Right.
that Planning Commission had begun to take on. And so I know that document's been worked on.
Right.
But I think what they're talking about tonight was about identification of those buildings.
Correct. And survey, yeah, the downtown. Okay, so this would be like the first action possibly taken regarding the ordinance, is the action being that so far, it's been just like a document that we have, but this would be the first time that we are entertaining the idea of actually moving on that ordinance and doing something with it.
So the way I would explain it is, I think, as outlined in the recommendation. So something we can start on, not quite immediately, but something that we can accomplish within our, you know, current resources, working with the historical society, is putting together an inventory of this character-defining buildings. I think that inventory, you know, long-term, as we develop a historic preservation ordinance, it would certainly inform that work effort. In the short term, as we review, you know, discretionary CDP applications, we'd be able to have that inventory as a tool that's available to tell us, you know, what features are important to preserve and what features should other development projects that come in try to reflect or respect. I would also add regarding historic preservation ordinance, it is a short-term goal, it is an implementation action in the general plan, so we need to do it, we need to implement our general plan. You know, coming into the city, I've met with multiple planning commissioners, of course, talked a lot with our staff, and I recognize that a historic preservation ordinance is very important to the community. What I would like to do is begin to understand more exactly what we could accomplish out of historic preservation ordinance, or what that might look like for the city of Moro Bay. The way I would want to kick off the historic preservation ordinance The way I would want to kick off the Historic Preservation Ordinance is probably do some type of study session where we, you know, we'll do research, we'll talk to experts, and have a presentation on what we realistically could expect to accomplish out of a Historic Preservation Ordinance for Morro Bay. And I think that would be kind of the jumping-off point to that work effort.
So that sounds bigger than just the downtown area. If I'm understanding you correctly, it would be something that would be broader, it would be citywide
Correct.
To start it off, okay. I don't have any other questions at this time.
Thank you. I think I'm going to open public comment on this item.
While I commend all the work that was done in the subcommittee, the one element that I did not really see is the property owner's involvement. Whether or not every property owner within the district was notified, you have an inventory of them, and to find out what their plans are and what their intentions are before anything gets built, before anything gets done, the property owner is the one that's going to make the final decision. Yes, the design element, but I think they need to get involved before anything else needs to get done. That's my opinion. In the last, in my limited knowledge, in the last 40 years, we've built four commercial buildings in the city of Morro Bay, and two repurposed. The repurposed Bank of America building, the repurposed De Sazio's, we built the 600 Morro Bay Boulevard, the Reed Commercial Building, the Mobile Station, and there's one other, and I don't remember who that is. But that's all we've done in 40 years. So before any type of design district should be discussed and stuff, we should have a list of every property owner, who they are, and what their intentions are, and get their input first before we go through all this. That's just my opinion.
Terry Simons, Morro Bay. And I would like to very much build upon Mr. Lefay's comments as to contacting the property owners. I was contacted by Councilperson Zara in advance of one of her public meetings, where she desperately asked me if I could develop a bullet, a visual-sized picture of the downtown for presentation purposes at her meeting. And I said, "Fine, I can do that. I have the technology and the experience and the availability of equipment to do it." And then I put it all together, and I said, "But what are your boundaries?" And she said, "Well, we haven't decided any boundaries." Okay, well, a fatal flaw, as I see it, in this whole concept. If you do not define your boundaries of your district that you're going to try to deal with, and then you do not contact the people inside those boundaries, because you don't have boundaries, so you don't know who to contact. I think we need to take a big step back here and really take a closer look at, what are you trying to do? I've been following the downtown and the waterfront evolution of design concepts for almost 10 years, starting way back when RRM had contracts to reevaluate the Embarcadero and all these kinds of things. And quite frankly, all the development along the Embarcadero has pretty much precluded any significant waterfront plan. Most of the buildings that are going to be there for the next 40 or 50 years are there now, and the one or two buildings that are coming are basically going to be there and built before the plan is completed. The other thing is, is that in following former Commissioner, former Director Graham's concepts and how he was planning to manage the waterfront plan, it looked like he was trying to develop funding from the Coastal Commission to help fund the downtown plan. And I'm concerned about that, because I think that we could jeopardize our coastal funding if it became publicly aware that there was an attempt to try to co-mingle these activities. I think it would be better off dealt with as one giant plan. That's the way we always dealt with it before, is a combination of both the downtown and waterfront, and make sure that the boundaries merged, not were two separate and distinct plans. Because I think if you do that, then you can talk about the waterfront downtown plan, and if you can get coastal money for that comprehensive plan, you won't jeopardize the loss of funding for that, because you're trying to hypothecate out some of the funds to do some other planning effort that the Coastal Commission may not be excited about. They seem to have stretched their areas of concern miles inland these days, so I don't know that that's really germane. But suffice it to say, I think if we're going to make a request for funds, we should make it for the composite. I have lots to say on this going forward, and the one thing I would hope, the staff report would seem to try to lead the direction of this closing out this program. I think you're just getting started, and I think you should keep the ad hoc committee going until such time as you have a comprehensive waterfront and downtown plan. You should not just abandon it
Thank you, Terry.
To staff. Thank you.
Terry Simons, thank you for that last comment, because we did not feel like we were satisfied as committee members. Betty Winholz, I was on the member, so I'm going to present a different perspective than what's in the report. And I appreciate that Mr. Codran acknowledged that those recommendations were his, they were not the committee's. I think that's important to acknowledge that and to say, what he suggested is nothing that we decided, because we never came to a conclusion on any of those topics. So this is being presented to you as his ideas, not ours, because we did not get a chance to conclude. And I appreciate Ms. Edwards saying that we need to have another meeting, because that was what we anticipated. And otherwise, the public's going to get ripped off, because that was part of the promise to them, that they would hear what we talked about. Regarding the map, that's broader than what I was picturing whenever we were meeting. Basically, I was picturing Morro Bay Boulevard and a few blocks of Main Street. That, to me, was our boundaries. Again, we never came to a conclusion on that. What else? Regarding the historic, I know that the Historic Society of Morro Bay proposed an ordinance, but our committee actually talked about that and had some actually walking downtown talked about it. I don't think this needs to be only in their ballpark. I think it should include members of our committee as well. And I think it could be actually taken off the plate of the planners in the city, that if you would let the residents talk about that, we could bring something to them. I don't know that they need to be involved initially. Certainly, the visual was something that came up, and I would agree with Ms. Landrum that I'm not sure what the waterfront master plan visuals have anything to do with what we were talking about in terms of protecting the visuals from Morro Bay Boulevard, basically. The process issue that was number four never came to before us. The economics, we got into a little bit, but again, there was no resolution. And certainly, the number-one topic about housing, and certainly bringing it back to 30 feet, was something that you are commended for doing, but it's nothing that we did in our committee. We never got to conclude. Should there be housing, new housing downtown? If so, should it be long-term housing? Should it be ADU housing? Should it be short-term rental housing? That whole discussion and the finances of that have not been concluded. So there were no findings from us. I would ask that you allow us to meet again, so that we have something to present to the public, because at this point, we don't have anything to present to them that's from the committee. What else? So that would be basically my comment, from my perspective. Thank you.
I heartily agree with what Betty just said, and the part of Councilwoman Edwards saying that we should have more input from the community. And I would really encourage that to happen before any decisions are made. And finally, I would like to heartily compliment Vice-Meer Landrum on the lucky acquisition of an assistant while she's out of town, who also acts as a hair advisor. So she needs that. Thank you.
Michelle Lester-Catera, North Morro Bay, City Manager, Staff, Mayor. I would like to piggyback on what was recommended by Councilwoman Edwards, as well as other residents of Morro Bay, that a second meeting for the community input really should be addressed and allowed, because this is our town, and a lot of the residents do have other suggestions and would like to go over what was proposed. So again, a second meeting is encouraged. Thank you.
My name is Jeff Echols, and I had the privilege of serving on the Downtown Design District Ad hoc Committee. And it's a bit of a quandary, I think, that we've found ourselves in with regard to the committee. I don't, I think one of the challenges of the committee is that we weren't entirely clear at the outset of the committee of what our end goal was, what our deliverables were supposed to be from the committee. So what we did as a committee is we explored many different facets of the downtown and what a potential downtown design district could look like. And we did some good work, and I want to thank the council for, and our two council members, for leading us in the work that we did. That said, I think we also need a word of caution in that the Downtown Design District is not going to come up with all the solutions or a robust, deliverable plan for the downtown in its current incarnation. And I don't think that's what it was designed to do. And I think there are some expectations that we want the ad hoc committee to deliver something like that, but I just, I just don't see it, and this is coming from over a decade of planning work, particularly with housing policy, I just don't see that coming out of the ad hoc committee. So I think perhaps a path moving forward is following some of the recommendations of our prior director, Director Codran, in that incremental approach. And then with our new leadership, with Director Singwald, looking at some of the things that are achievable over the next three years or so within the downtown, and further defining what it is through more public input that we want to see in downtown. So I'll just close by saying, you know, we were chipping away at the elephant, eating the elephant one bite at a time, and it's an unreasonable expectation, at this point anyway, to think that the ad hoc committee is going to provide all the answers for our downtown. Yeah, I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment on this item? AGP, are there any raised hands in the queue?
Mayor Wickson, there are no raised hands in the queue.
Thank you very much. With that, I will bring it back to council and close public comment. Mr. Echols, I thought the whole goal was you guys were going to resolve this.
Yeah.
I think everybody brought up a lot of valid points, and it just keeps piling up and circling around, and I would share, there was a comment about the business owners, there were business owners on this committee that were included in the group, that were property owners, the property owner of the Siren, who has done a phenomenal job revitalizing that whole street corner and bringing that business really to the forefront of the community, as well as business owners that were leaseholders, yeah, on the Embarcadero, or on the Boulevard, excuse me. So I think they brought a real vital comments to that committee in how it affects them and what it looks like. Definitely, the idea of a path forward, I think, in how we do it incrementally is really the key to it, because it is so much. So I will come back, that's what I was going to do, I was going to come back and go for comments here. Go ahead.
I have a question. So, you know, I'm hearing a lot of folks, including councilmembers, saying that, you know, there should be more public input, that second meeting. And my question is, before that, if we were to move forward with a recommendation for the second meeting, for the public to come forward with their opinions, would the opinions be on the recommendations this evening? Or would the opinions be after a final, maybe, I don't know, another? It sounds like there wasn't closure on this ad hoc group. And so I guess my curiosity is, you know, would this, would there need to be a final, a final, and not all the answers, of course, the world won't be, you know, all the problems will be solved, but a final recommendation from the ad hoc group in agreement prior to the second public meeting is my question. So I'm just kind of curious about that.
Yeah, I think that at least forming some consensus that they could bring forward, I don't know that they're all going to agree, because we always have different visions, but certainly
A majority.
Have a, they can work with us, we do. I think that it's a good recommendation to circle back and have that other meeting, perhaps when you could get everybody in. I see you have something you want to throw in there.
Yes. So I think that's a very good question. Of course, it's going to be the, you know, council prerogative on the direction that you want to provide staff. And thinking quite a bit about this the last few days, I think there are kind of the two options that Councilmember Ford laid out. I think one option is we have a community forum, we present the recommendations in this memo, similar to how I did this evening, but I probably would go into a little bit more depth. We have a listening session to get the reaction and feedback from the community on those recommendations, and then perhaps at some point in an appropriate time, that could be summarized and reported back to the council. That's something that it definitely would, it'll take time and resources, but it's something that we could realistically achieve in the near term. The second option of what we're hearing from some of the subcommittee members, they really want to see of, you know, having additional meetings with the subcommittee to build some type of consensus or get maybe close to consensus on the subcommittee's, you know, recommendations, and then having a community forum on that, that's a much, I believe, larger effort that would distract from some of our immediate priorities, such as implementing those advanced planning projects that I presented earlier, as well as, of course, you know, processing the best project is a major priority that takes a lot of resources right now. So considering those more immediate priorities, that more comprehensive approach, option two, I think if that's the council's desire, we would recommend putting a pause on this effort and then resuming early 2025 on that.
Well, I appreciate your response, Mr. Singwald. I don't have any other questions, and is this the point in time you want comments? Okay. See, I, I'm very, I was very excited and still am happy about the fact that we had this design group put together. I understand the passion that has come from our community regarding the downtown area and what it means to our locals, as well as tourists, and the character of Morro Bay, and understanding that there's two sides to it. There's one of, you know, you know, keeping it the way it is, but in recognizing that over time, it does crumble, and we do need to renovate some of those buildings, bring them up to speed in our current day and age, but not compromising the character. But when, you know, hearing from developers over the last few years, being on council and also being on Planning Commission, is the fear of, you know, if a developer were to come in and want to redo a building, that they have no clue as to what our city is looking for, and that they will spend a lot of money and then be denied their project. And so I think that part, at least my idea of what this group would have brought forward is some ideas and some guidance, so that if someone does want to redevelop or add or enhance, elevate is always a great word, any of these buildings downtown, our downtown corridor, that these guidelines would help aid somebody knowing what it is that the city expects. that these guidelines would help aid somebody, knowing what it is that the city expects, and would hopefully promote the elevation of that area, but also, again, as I've mentioned a few times, keeping the character of our city. So, did you want to add something? I could see you're like trying to grab.
No, apologies, Councilmember Ford. I just want to be clear, just very quickly here, sorry for the interjection. But when we created this ad hoc committee, Mayor Protem Landrum and myself were assigned to make a recommendation to council. So I I just want to make sure that we understand what what we're doing here. And probably, if I may, kind of kick it back to Mayor Protem Landrum, if possible.
I'm going to let Councilmember Ford.
No, no, I know. I just wanted to, I absolutely, thank you, Mayor. But I just wanted to make sure we understood the what we were doing.
Right. So so I'm just, what I'm explaining, though, is my understanding of what this was. And so and so my, I guess my question to you and Mayor Protem Landrum is, do you feel as though you brought those recommendations back? Or do you feel as the, and you said that you feel like you need another public input meeting. I would, I guess that my question would be for Mayor, or Protem Mayor Landrum, do you also feel as though you need that additional public input meeting?
I really appreciate your your conversation on this, Councilmember Ford. I I do feel like we need another public meeting. And I also feel like, to be practical, for that meeting, especially, we should have the subcommittee meet again to come to a conclusion on what we, you know, what what we want to present to the, as options to the community. Terry Simons brought up a really good point. There was no clarification of what the actual boundary of downtown is. There were, the map that was included in the packet was, I think, like the most extreme limits of the borders of downtown that we could have. And really, to even, I mean, and and for developers, as you were saying, to know what what they can and can't do in Morro Bay, it's almost like we don't know ourselves. So how can we convey that to developers? Like, I I really think that's an important thing to flesh out. We need to at least define where our boundaries are and the footprint of downtown. Yeah, I definitely think a second public meeting is called for, as well as a final meeting with the subcommittee to to kind of just finish up the thoughts presented at that final meeting.
I guess I have another question for you both, and maybe the whole council, really. Is the expectation, if we, if, you know, we can move forward with another public input meeting, then we revisit as a council, if we want to move forward with the final recommendations? So my question would be, you know, how quickly are we acting on this? There's a lot of elements, let's say, all of them were brought forward, and we, and maybe even a few additional ones after the public input meeting. I know that our community development department is is kind of maxed out on their time. However, I know that they'll carve time, if we direct them to, to make these types of things happen. And I want to be respectful of that as well. And so I guess my question is, what is your expectations? If we move forward with this sort of outline of all these things that we want to bring forward for the downtown development, anyways, the DDD, triple D? If we want to, you know, move forward that direction to create the guidelines that would, that we would put forward, do you do you have expectations that they would be immediately implemented? Or would it be more of a, like, let's grab the low-hanging fruit first? Let's look at like the historical part of it, you know? Pace it out so that our our staff isn't like, oh, my gosh, pulling their hair out, going, that's a lot to accomplish? And maybe provide more of a guided timeline as to when to implement these items? And so that's just kind of what's swirling around in my brain right now, is to staff expectations, but also respecting the community and those who volunteered on this group on all of these meetings. And now we're probably thinking about another meeting. And so just wanting to be respectful of all of those things, but also not just become stagnant, but how do we, how do we move forward, but in a respectful way that works for our city staff, as well as what our council directs? So that's just kind of where I'm at.
Councilmember.
Yeah, I I I think after hearing you, Mr. Singwald, I think probably for clarification, it would make sense to me that, I mean, this report that Mr. Calderon put together had all the framework. And I think it did give some action items to staff to work on and implement, you know, intermittently as you can. And each one of those, I would also venture to say, would come back to council as well for further discussion and public input at each one of those as well. So I I think that Mayor Protem Landrum, my thought is, is that we would have another meeting with the Downtown Design District to fill in maybe some of the gaps that, at least share with Mr. Singwald, some of the items that the group may feel was not in this current report. And, you know, not some huge, long, drawn-out, three, four meetings, but just a meeting for clarification. It is clear we are not going to solve everything in this ad hoc group. I never, since the beginning, felt that we would get that. But I do think we have some great working items. And again, as I said, I think they absolutely complement our downtown waterfront strategic plan that exists since 2016, that Terry, I saw a picture of you in that in that plan, doing the work. And this is kind of one of those documents that I would like to see, you know, not collect dust on a shelf. And so I think taking a little bit more time, one more meeting with the committee, with staff, and and then take those deliverables, that report, to a forum for the community to hear. That's where I'm going with it.
Councilmember Burton.
I'm I'm hearing a lot here and looking at the picture of the the district. I'm wondering if it would perhaps be helpful to take it in chunks or something that would, so you could delve in more deeply, but in a smaller area? So so that that's a thought that I had. I like the idea of coming back for another meeting to finish what was originally planned. I'm just afraid it might, like, grow, you know? Yeah, grow some more and thereby get to a point where it can't be dealt with, that it will just get too big with all the other things that are going on. So I I don't have a perfect answer for this, but seems like maybe chunking it might help.
Councilmember Landrum.
I I I would like to make a motion that we, for the subcommittee to meet again for a final meeting and and then to present the outcome of that final meeting to the final public meeting. As we kind, I believe the motion, the original motion, or not the, I guess not the original, but the one that was made since we've been on council, intended to have the second public meeting.
So you want one follow-up committee meeting and one public workshop?
One public workshop.
I have a motion. Do I have a second for discussion?
Yeah, I I I second that, but I I was trying to figure out if this was what you needed in terms of the recommendation, Mr. Singwald. Sorry, yes.
Councilmember Edwards, I appreciate that that question. Like, we've heard with the discussion this evening at the council that there is a lot to be covered as far as the, you know, DDD recommendations. My, I'll say, concern is additional subcommittee meeting. We go off of the topics that we discussed tonight. It may be, it may be too too much to really reach a meaningful resolution on. And it may be helpful to get direction from the council this evening on how we might focus the discussion at that subcommittee meeting. If there's, you know, one or two of these topics that are of the most importance to the council, is it a very important objective to define the the boundaries, to get consensus from the subcommittee on the boundaries? So some some definition and focus for that subcommittee meeting would be helpful. And while I have the the mic, I wanted to mention as well, and I think the council is aware of this. The city, of course, has a recently, relatively recently updated general plan. And everything we're talking about tonight is really implementation of the general plan. And if we try to implement it, you know, all at once, we're not going to accomplish much, because we're we're taking on too much at once. And again, I think that really emphasizes the importance of focusing the the work effort. Also, every year, we're required under state law to bring the general plan progress report and present it to the council. And that would be the opportunity to have a public discussion on where we are with each of these implementation measures. So this will be ongoing, live, live discussion to continue as we implement the general plan.
I think I understand your concern for the timeframe and and the added workload. As you shared earlier, you didn't have an opportunity to meet with all of the subcommittee members. And so I think, therefore, we're feeling that maybe it's incomplete in that sense. So I'm not sure that the path needs to be much more than the conversations you had with those four, but to circle back around with the whole group. And and again, you're not going to get consensus on everything, but at least maybe find what is the top things that we can use as far as moving forward to look at policies or changes, I think. You know, the the incremental approach that you talked about. Vistra is the number one largest project ever in the city that defines our future. But it's not our entire future. And the downtown area, which is our corridor and and the heart of the community, besides our waterfront, in a different way, in a historic way, is equally valued moving forward, too. So I think if we can find some time to work that in, I I understand the load. I don't think anybody expects there to be some workshop next week or in the next two weeks, but where it can be scheduled in and allow some public participation with the goal, perhaps, of taking some of those ideas that there was consensus on, sharing them with what Mr. Calderon put in there, and seeing what we can do to have some actionable items, maybe? Does that work? Yes?
Yeah, and if if maybe, I don't know, I'm I'm speaking from what I would characterize as as the really top issues, to to simplify it for staff. I feel like the view shed was really important. The the footprint was an important one to the group, as well as the historic or character-defining buildings. So those would be what I would single out as the, and and well, and housing, I don't know, top four. Councilmember Edwards, do you, would you, what would you say?
Yeah, I mean, I I was envisioning, again, a meeting that did not get into, you know, far into the rabbit hole as much as just making sure that what is in this report, the committee feels confident in, because they're the ones that put the work in with staff. And and so I I I just think it's important that we honor that. And I I agree, Mayor Protem and Councilwoman Ford, that limiting, like, at least probably narrowing the field here is a great idea. That's going to be much more able for you guys to, you know, digest and work forward with.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any more discussion? Ask for a roll call, roll call vote, please. Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
I don't, I don't know. I guess this would be a question for the city attorney. Councilmember Edwards just said she's not sure what we're voting, like, if it could be, if it could be restated before we complete the vote. Is that possible?
Yes, and.
Thank you.
Madam City Clerk, do you have the motion in the minutes?
The motions, I heard it, was for the subcommittee to meet again for a final meeting, then present the final outcome to a, in a public forum as originally intended.
Yes. Thank you. And yes, from me.
Mayor Protem Landrum?
Yes.
And Mayor Wickson? Yes. Motion carries by vote. Thank you very much. And our last item this evening is going to be 9B, approval of city manager contract amendment. Mr. Newmeyer.
Honorable Mayor and members of the city council, you have before you tonight consideration of approval of a Second Amendment to city managers' employment agreement for the city. Fiscal impact is a one-time cost of $1,063.25 for a retention bonus. And then, over the course of three years, COLA salary increases consistent with those received by department heads based upon recently negotiated MOUs of $35,155 over three years. Little bit of background, of course, Ms. Kimball joined the city August 14, 2023. Council approved a First Amendment to her contract April of this year to provide a salary increase to step five. And this amendment largely provides cleanup items to provide some consistency with items, benefits that the former city manager, Scott Collins, had in his amended agreement. And that includes increasing city manager Kimball's maximum vacation leave accrual bank from 300 hours to 310 hours. Provides that there'll be annual cost of living adjustments to salaries similar, if any, to those provided to city department heads. Also has a one-time lump sum retention bonus of $1,063.25. And that's the item before the council tonight. And also, to be sure legal requirements are met pursuant to the government code, it's recommended that the mayor read a statement that's in the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Newmeyer. Questions from council?
Can we clarify what the retention bonus, like, how we came up with that amount? Is that, yeah, just just for clarification, for transparency purposes?
Sure. So it is an amount that is equivalent to, but not intended to replicate the delta between, if there was a step-five increase six months into the city manager's contract with the city and when it was actually provided. However, we're providing this as a retention bonus, as a lump sum, one-time payment that would be paid within the next two pay periods.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you. With that, I will open public comment on this item.
Evening, Madam Mayor, council and staff. Terry Simons. At the risk of sounding picky unish, I do not understand the need for the retention bonus. I think lacking said bonus, I doubt that our city manager would resign her position and move on to something else. But I'm more concerned about this implied automatic need for COLA adjustments just because the rest of the city staff, who are regular employees, not contract employees, get an annual cost of living adjustment. There's nothing, and thank you, by the way, for putting her full contract in the staff report so I could actually read it. I see nothing in that contract that implies that there is a COLA COLA opportunity. I see nothing in that contract that implies that there's a COLA, COLA opportunity or expectation in the original contract or in the supplemental contract. So that one needs a little explaining to me. I'm not trying to seem cheap or picky unish, but I think that the city manager is being adequately compensated with the two initial contract and supplemental first amendment that she's gotten so far. And on a personal note, I'm a little frustrated that the appearance that the city attorney is actually representing the city manager in this is a little off-putting. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment on this item? AG Pierre, are there any hands in the queue?
No, there are not.
Thank you. With that, I will close public comment and bring it back to council. Mr. Simons, I'm more than glad to address your comments and questions. The department heads all receive COLAs. We have a three-year contract. This is written so that we don't have to go back every single year and negotiate a contract change based on the COLAs that the department heads are receiving and to not address it and make those adjustments, the compaction between those department heads and the city manager would become narrower and narrower each year. So we, in Mr. Collins' contract, the city manager before us, it was written in. In Ms. Kimball's, it was not originally written in. So we've written it in the same as his and the retention bonus was because due to so many other large-scale projects that have taken a lot of the council's time in closed session, the city manager was gracious enough to let us keep pushing her evaluations and pushing her evaluations, pushing her evaluations, while we addressed the other things that we needed to with closed session items, with WARP closeouts and all those other things. So therefore, her step increase became delayed. And this was a way for us to be able to be fair to her and address it within the parameters of the law. So we needed to make sure that we followed the rules. And the only other change we made was we gave her 10 hours additional, which was still less than Mr. Collins'. So that's how those changes came. So just to answer those questions for you, hopefully that will give you some idea of why we did it. And I would just want to share, again, I appreciate, and I think we all do, that Ms. Kimball was willing to wait while we addressed these other things since they just became more pressing. And I would share that when we made this last change, that the council had a unanimous vote of confidence in the city manager, five oh, all of us. So thank you, Ms. Kimball, we appreciate it. And with that, questions, comments, or a motion?
I'd like to provide a comment. Prior, as, and probably everyone that's here was probably there, I did not vote in favor of the step increase. I didn't feel like that was the proper time to do that. However, with that disagreement, I do not feel that it is fair for the city manager to not get the full amount that she would have gotten if we did not have those delays in reviewing her, her contract, or, you know, doing her review. And so for that reason, I don't feel, you know, the, the majority of our council felt that that was the proper time for her step increase and for that reason, I support making it full, you know, correcting that and making sure that she gets the full amount that the majority of the council agreed upon. So that's why I'm voting in favor of the retention bonus and I appreciate the city attorney for clarifying what that meant as well as the mayor. And, and yes, I am in support of this item. And also I want to thank the city manager for her work.
Thank you. I think we all do.
And Mayor, if I could, if it be possible, to read that little statement before we vote?
Before the motion or with the motion?
Either one's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm going to read the same thing the city attorney already said because that's what he told me I need to do. The city manager will receive an additional 10 hours vacation leave bank accrual from 300 to 310 hours total, consistent with the COLA salary increases provided to city department heads. The city manager's salary for 24, 25 fiscal year will be 234062, for 25, 26 fiscal year will be 245773, and for fiscal year 26, 27 will be 258066, totaling 35, 3,500, 155, 35,155 over three years, period. And any further increases thereafter consistent will be consistent with COLAs, salary increases provided to department heads, and the city manager will receive a one-time retention bonus of $1,063.25 to be paid no later than the second regular period, pay period following the effective date of the second amendment. And with that, I will make a motion to approve nine B and ask for a second.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Landrum?
Yes.
And Mayor Wixson?
Yes.
Motion carries five oh.
Thank you very much. Thank you again for your patience on that, we appreciate it. Future agenda items? Future agenda items?
No.
Mayor Protem, future agenda items?
No.
With that, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.